Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The October 28th Special Town Meeting will start. If you're able to stand, please stand and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So it's nice to see our old town meeting members, and I want to welcome our new town meeting members. I know we had a little discussion at the pre-town meeting that we use a lot of acronyms. You know, government just likes to use a lot of acronyms, whether it's town government, state government, or federal government. So please, if there's an acronym in your book that you don't know, don't hesitate to stand up and ask. It takes a long time to learn all these acronyms. Excuse me. Couple housekeeping things. If you could silence your phones, please. And we are going to... Everyone have their voting device? When you vote, just press a button once and watch the screen to see if your vote is shown. Don't keep pressing it, please. Just wait about 30 seconds. If it's not there, then hit the button again. Will we be done by 7:30? Are we done? No?
No.
There is not.
We would have to buy a new light bulb for the projector.
We'll work on that. So is voting complete?
Yep.
Okay, so voting is complete. Fifty-four said yes, 25 said no, and seven abstained. And I will not take it personally from the 25, who said no as your new town moderator, that it's my fault. Article 1, to hear the reports of the Finance Committee, other town officers and committees, or act on anything relative thereto. And first, we'll hear from the Board of Selectmen.
Good evening. Thank you to all the town meeting members who have come out tonight and are giving of your time to forward this process. Okay, so the Auburn Select Board makes the following recommendations on the annual town meeting warrant articles. Articles 2 to 16, 18 to 21, and 23 to 25, the Select Board voted to recommend approval. Articles 22 and 26, the Select Board voted to not recommend approval. Article 1, the Select Board voted to take no position on this article. In Article 17, the Select Board voted to defer to the petitioner on this article. Um, the Auburn Select Board, Anne Kavanaugh Chair, Todd Corain Vice Chair, Dan Carpenter, Stephen Chambers, and Sarah Ruffey.
Thank you. Now we hear from the Finance Committee Chairman Kennedy. There you are.
Good evening. The Auburn Finance Committee makes the following recommendations on the annual town meeting warrant articles. Articles 2 through 5, 7, 10 through 12, 17, 19 through 21, and 23 and 24, the Finance Committee voted to recommend approval of these articles. Articles 22 and 26, the Finance Committee voted to not recommend approval of these articles. Article 1, the Finance Committee voted to take no position on this article. Articles 6, 8 through 9, 13 through 16, 18 and 25, the Finance Committee voted to defer to the petitioner on these articles. Signed, the Auburn Finance Committee, Kevin Kennedy Chair, Michael Marshall Vice Chair, Stephen Concilio, George Graham, Patrick Jones, Travis Insuci, and Andrew Shaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committees that want to make any presentation? Seeing none, Article 2.
Madam Moderator, I move at the town meeting vote to amend Article 3 of the May 6, 2025 annual town meeting as follows. Increase line item number 011-992-5740. Insurance and bonds from $990,000 to $1,095,000. Increase line item number 013032-5691. Norfolk agricultural assessment from $96,500 to $157,838. Increase line item number 011-451-511101. Treasurer-collector salary from $95,450 to $110,450. Increase line item number 011-322-5782. Salary reserve from $480,000 to $530,000. Increase line item number 012101-511104. Police chief salary from $147,622 to $192,987. Increase line item number 012101-519005. Police Chief Quinn bill from $39,366 to $47,617. Increase line item number 012202-5785. Fire professional development from $62,656 to $154,000. Increase line item number 012211-519009. Close. Okay. Fire physical fitness from $0 to $48,000. Increase line item 012211-511113. Firefighter salary from $3,000... Sorry. to $3,966,839. Increase available funds, ambulance receipts, from $1,650,000 to $1,888,000. And further, to approve and amended FY 2026 budget for the Town of Auburn of $82,875,31.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. Mrs. Ethia, do you have an amendment for this article?
I do. I move that we amend Article 2 by increasing line item number 012211-511113. Firefighter salary by an additional $140,000 from $3,868,183 to $4,106,839, which will increase the available funds, ambulance receipts, from $1,650,000 to $2,028,000.
Is there a second? We have a second. Chief, could you address the reason for the amendment, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. The department, with permission from the Board of Selectmen this year, applied for a, what's called a SAFER grant, a Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. And we were very fortunate enough to receive that grant in the amount of a little over $1.9 million to hire eight additional firefighters. The grant, federal side pays 75% the first two years of the grant, and then 35% in year three. So the amended $140,000 from ambulance receipts to firefighter salaries is the remainder of this fiscal year's portion of our 25% that we would pay towards the grant.
Are there any questions just on the amendment? Okay, okay. So we are on the amendment right now? Are there any questions on the amendment? I'm going to ask CFO Karen Harnoyes to do her presentation, and then you'll have all the information you need to vote on this.
Good evening. I just have a short presentation on the FY 2026 amended budget. Now, as we just read in Article 2, there is a FY 2026 supplemental budget article that's proposed for a change or an increase of $522,954. Of that amount, this is the... This is the original one, as before it was amended. $238,000 coming from ambulance receipts, and the remainder will come from other available funds, such as increases in local receipts, state aid, and other available funds. This slide is also showing the additional financial articles that are being presented in the warrant for tonight. Besides Article 2, Article 5 is for cancer and heart screenings, and that's being proposed to come from ambulance reserves from $16,200. Article 7 is active threat training for police and fire, and that's coming from ambulance receipts as well, $50,000. Article 10 is the Garden Centennial Celebration for $50,000 that's going to... That's being proposed for free cash. Article 11 is to the OPEC Trust for free cash for $250,000. Article 12 is stabilization from free cash, $100,000. Article 19 is for a sewer rehab project for $2.5 million. $500,000 is coming from the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings and $2 million from borrowing. Article 20, golf course drainage and irrigation improvements for $500,000... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'll speak closer to the mic. Article 21, design of the Water Street Covert, $150,000, which is coming from other available funds from unexpended CIP accounts. Article 22 is the Water Street Covert replacement, $1.5 million in borrowing. And Article 23, from free cash to replace the monitoring well, $40,000, which would be a total appropriation from free cash of $440,000. Now, according to the town's policy, up to 50% of the free cash increase can be spent. That would be $632,803. And with this appropriation, it would leave us with a balance of $192,803. Of that amount, approximately $140,000 is going to be used towards the FY 27 capital budget. Okay, on the next slide, it's just comparing the appropriations from the annual town meeting to this special fall town meeting. The appropriations increasing $1.4 million. The increases are coming from the fall town meeting articles, $1,679. Change in the cherry sheet charges, which are actually going down $3,310. The overlay account is going down $266,620. Cherry sheet offsets are also decreasing $4,394, and that accounts for the total increase in the appropriations, $1.4 million. So the next slide shows how we're going to fund those differences. There is an increase in local receipts, $119,000. Cherry sheet receipts are increasing $157,000. The tax levy is actually decreasing by $266,620, and on a future slide, we'll talk about that a little bit more. The available funds are increasing $454,000. Retained earnings, those in the enterprise funds, increasing by $500,000. And there's, in the use of the free cash, $440,000. So you can see from the annual to the fall, there's an increase of $4.4 million, and we have a balanced budget between revenues and appropriations. On the next slide, I just... We'll talk about the tax levy comparison from the annual to the special meeting. The tax base remains the same. Two and a half percent increase remains the same. But the new growth, actually, that the amount that was certified was $733,380, which was less than what was budgeted at the million. So that is the amount that needed to be adjusted through the overlay. So the levy is projected at $49.7 million. The levy limit is 59, and the percent of the levy limit is 84.23%. This is kind of a recap of the revenues and the expenses, and this is showing that there's a balanced budget. The excess levy still remains at $9.3 million, and we're utilizing the full amount of the two and a half percent of Prop 2.5. And the last page is just a copy of our free cash certification showing the amounts that were certified as of 7/1 of '25. In the general fund, 12... Just under $12.5 million. Enterprise Sewer, just over $1 million. Enterprise Golf, $1.5 million. And the enterprise, the PEG Access, which is the Cable Enterprise Fund, $321,000. So thank you for your attention, and if there are any questions.
Thank you so much. So we are now on the amendment. The amendment to increase line item 012211-511113 firefighter salary by an additional $140,000 from $3,868,183 to $4,106,839, which will increase the available funds from ambulance receipts from $1,650,000 to $2,028,000. Are there any questions on the amendment? The amendment passes. We're now on the Article 2 as amended. Are there any questions?
First of all, forgive me, I couldn't make the pre-town meeting. But on, I got a couple. Line 2, Norfolk Agriculture. How many students are we sending down there? What are the grades? And will it go down? What's the increase for?
I'll ask Dr. Chamberlain to respond to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Currently, we had two students that went into their freshman year this year, and I believe one is a... The other two, we have four total. One is a sophomore, one's a junior. We are also responsible for transportation, so that's part of that number.
So the major increase is the transportation?
Major increase is the two students that got accepted this year. We didn't anticipate that.
Okay, thank you. Line 6. The Police Chief Quinn bill? I didn't believe... I'm sorry. I didn't know the police chief was part of the Quinn bill. $39,000 to $40,000.
Chief, do you want to take this one?
I got it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Town manager will take this one.
If I may, the two items for the police chief's salary and Police Chief Quinn are from the prior police chief that retired. He retired him in July, and we had to pay him out all his earned time. So because of that, this is refurbishing the account, and the accounts are the Quinn and the salary that we're refurbishing.
Okay, thank you. Line number 8. The physical fitness for the fire. I thought we were going to be having a gym in the new fire station. Will that money come back once the new fire station is done?
Chief Coleman?
Through the moderator. This is not for gym memberships as part of the firefighters' new collective bargaining agreement. They will receive a $1,000 per-member stipend if they pass an annual physical fitness exam. So this is a structured exam, like a physical abilities test, where they actually have to prove agility. And if they pass that, it's a $1,000 stipend.
And that's a contractual obligation?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? We've completed voting. This was a simple majority. The motion passes. Article 3. Mrs. Ethia?
Madam Moderator, I move at the town meeting vote to amend Article 4 for the School Department Capital Improvement Budget for fiscal year 2022, approved at the May 4, 2021 annual town meeting to repurpose the original appropriation of $150,000 from the Swiss Building Rehab for Air Quality Improvements to be used towards the Swiss parking lot repair and improvement.
Is there a second? We have a second. Mrs. Ethia, do you have an amendment?
To see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article 4 from the School Department Capital Improvement Budget for fiscal year 2022, approved at the May 4, 2021 annual town meeting to repurpose $34,446.48 from the Swiss Building Rehab for Air Quality Improvements and $265,533.52 from unexpended CIP funds from number 303070A17ATM13, middle school project, all to be used towards the Swiss parking lot repair and improvements or act on anything relative thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a second. Dr. Chamberlain will speak to this article, and then we'll take questions and vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a short presentation. Sometime late this summer, we noticed some pretty significant sinkholes in the center of the Swanson Road parking... The Swanson Road parking lot. As the school year began, the sinkholes became dramatically larger and quite deep, some being two feet deep. So we did an exploratory on what was going on underneath there, and there's a drainage system for rainwater that had failed. The pipe had cracked. We had gotten an initial estimate for what that was going to cost to fix that portion of it, which was really in the center of the parking lot. As they proceeded to investigate, as sometimes happened, it was noticed that the problem was much bigger than we had anticipated. So this is a little hard to see in this light, but if you look down, this is looking down one of the drainage pipes. You can see that at the top, there's a hole cut. Those are supposed to be cut at certain intervals. We had many more cut than should have been initially. You'll also see on the left side of this photograph an area where the rock surrounding it has penetrated the tunnel itself. This is another one of the holes that are at the top of the drainage pipe that should not be there. An area along the bottom where there's a significant crack. And along the right-hand side of this, it's a little hard to see, that there are a series of hairline cracks along this pipe. So as this was discovered, we, you know, consulted with our highway department, which was great, and others, and it was felt like the entire thing needed to be repaired because it could pose a very significant liability for the town. So an initial quote on the first section of this that was first discovered was $132,999. When the further inspection was done in order to complete, really complete, the entire parking lot, it was an additional $155,400 for a total of $288,399. I am thankful for the support of the town manager and CFO Harnoyes helping us to determine the best place to find funding for this in our CIP. And you'll see that the... There was $265,553 left from the middle school building project that can go toward this, thus only resulting in us having to use any more recent air quality amount in the amount of $34,446. So it's an overall total of $300,000 for the parking lot repair. It is a little bit more than what the actual estimates show, but chances are good, from what they've told me, that we'll get some significant... Some additional charges for some of the fill that had to be brought in to go around this new drainage situation. So certainly not what we had planned for, nor that we expected. But as you know, parking at our schools is at a premium, and this is an important thing for us to have and to have it be safe for our teachers and our students and our families. So thank you.
Thank you. So we are on the amendment. This requires a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions on the amendment?
I'm not sure if this is pertinent to the amendment, but it's to what Dr. Chamberlain had just mentioned. I was just curious how old the structure was that was broken, and is it being replaced by the same type of structure? And, you know, relative to the age, is, you know, either the manufacturer of that product or the installer liable for any of that cost?
So that work was done in 2015 when we did the opening of the middle school and the revamping of Swanson Road to be our intermediate school. We are exploring those options right now, along with some insurance options. So that's been referred as well. So we are looking to see if there's anything we recover there. We are outside of 10 full years of when it was actually done, and so we may or may not be able to have anything as far as a warranty or a liability, but we are exploring insurance options for cooping some of that funding.
Are there any other questions? So we're now voting on the amendment, which is just a simple majority. The motion passes. So we're now on Article 3 as amended. Are there any questions? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. We'll vote now, please. Thank you. The article passes. Article four, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move at the town meeting vote to amend Article four for the school department capital improvement budget for the fiscal year 2024, approved at the May 2nd, 2023 annual town meeting to remove $25,000 from the original appropriation of $280,000 from the Auburn High School building rehab for parking lot resurfacing at Auburn High School roof slash drainage repair.
Is there a second? We have a second. Uh, this is also a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions on the article as amended? Seeing none, we'll now vote. Apologies, I said as amended, but it was as read. And the article passes. Article five, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $16,200 from ambulance reserve for appropriations for the purchase of cancer and heart screenings for members of the fire rescue department.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions on this article? Seeing none, we'll now vote. Thank you. The motion passes eighty-seven five. That was a simple majority. Article six, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator? Madam Moderator, I move at the town meeting vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 32, Section 4, 2B and Mass General Law, Chapter 32, Section 4, 2B and a half to allow permanent intermittent or call firefighters to be credited with full-time service for the purpose of calculating retirement benefits in accordance with Chapter 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws and other applicable laws and collective bargaining agreements or act on anything relative thereto.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions? Chief, if you want to give a brief synopsis?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, I just want to explain exactly what this article is to town meeting. So if town meeting votes to approve this section of Mass General Law, what this will allow is any, anybody that has ever served as a call firefighter for the town of Auburn who has moved on and either become a full-time firefighter in another community or have taken a, a municipal job in another community, this would allow them to buy their credible service for the years that they served as a call firefighter in Auburn. Um, for those that came to pre-town meeting, the example that I gave was if a college student, you know, great kid graduates high school and the four years that he's in college, he mows lawns for our parks department and then he goes off and becomes a municipal employee somewhere else. If he did, he would be able to buy back that credible service because he was working for the DPW. There's a weird provision in the law that does not allow call firefighters to do that unless this provision of the law is approved. So basically this would allow, um, anybody that served as a call firefighter again to buy back their credible service. There is no financial impact to the town because, um, the expense to buy back that is borne by that employee. And because that member never served in a full-time capacity with the town, there's no future pension liability as well. So this just simply authorizes the town clerk to be able to provide a letter saying that they did have credible service so they could buy that back through the retirement board.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions after hearing that? Seeing none, this is a simple majority vote, so we'll now vote. We have ninety yes to abstain the motion. The, um, article passes. Article seven, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move at the town meeting vote to appropriate $50,000 from ambulance receipts for personnel expenses and other related costs associated with active threat response training for police and fire.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll now vote. This is also a simple majority. Any one two? The article passes ninety-one yes, two no's. Article eight, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to meet compliance with the MBTA community law by amending the Auburn zoning bylaws, Section 3.2.2.3 Apartments, um, 4.1.7 special permit uses, 4.3.5.1 use and 4.3.6.1 minimum lot size in unsued areas and add Section 3.2.2.4 multifamily as printed in the October 28th, 2025 special town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions on this article? Could you come down to the microphone, please?
To the best of my knowledge, the MBTA does not have a stop in Auburn, so it does not have direct service to Auburn on the MBTA.
Okay, can you just give your name and precinct, please?
Pardon?
Your name and precinct?
Paul Sweeney, precinct three, sorry.
Thank you. Dr. Manad.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I missed part of the question, but were you referring to that, the fact that the town doesn't have MBTA community service in, in the town?
There's no, there's no MBTA service here in Auburn.
Uh, that's correct, but Auburn is considered an adjacent town to, and so Worcester has the MBTA service. As an adjacent town, Auburn must still comply with certain provisions of that law.
Mr. Stensel? And I just ask everyone to speak into the microphone. I've gotten word from Mr. Hugo that we need to speak into the microphone a little better.
John Stensel, precinct five. Um, I want to know why we're doing this. Are we being, you know, why do we want to do this and what's actually going to happen?
To the moderator, if the town does not, um, comply with the MBTA communities, it's at risk of losing grant funding. Um, it has also been, the attorney general has also, um, connected legal action against some towns that have not complied. So it's a benefit for the town to comply with this bylaw.
Mr. Murray?
Uh, Jeff Murray, precinct three. Um, I would suggest that these zoning changes would make it more desirable for, uh, the 40B projects that, uh, the town's been trying to avoid, uh, making it desirable to have by making it, uh, more, more restricted in the residential districts.
The 40B projects kind of skirt, the zoning bylaws, this wouldn't necessarily impact 40B projects.
Okay, uh, but what I'm saying is the, uh, the changes that are being suggested, uh, would make it more restrictive for residential development by, uh, with the language that's added, which would...
Jeff, can you pull that mic down a little?
Sure.
Thank you.
What it, what it would do would make it more desirable or less desirable for residential development and, uh, more desirable for 40B developments to, uh, because they're not, they're not bound by the same standards that, uh, the zoning bylaws, they're, uh, approved on a state level.
So th- these changes would make apartments more, um, easily built in, in town and that's what the state is requiring is apartments to be built by, right, not necessarily 40B apartments, that's a separate kind of development governed by state law, these would be governed by the town's laws.
Mr. Nelson?
Uh, Doug Nelson, precinct two. I think the town should reject anything having to do with this MD, MBTA project or the laws. It's, uh, many towns have already rejected this proposal and I, I think it would serve the residents of this town to reject this completely. Thank you.
Supporting, did you want? Mr. Manad, I'm sorry.
Just the, the state has already passed the MBTA bylaw. The town is required to comply with the state's law. Uh, and if we don't, we risk losing funding, uh, from the state for certain projects. And like, and there's also the risk of legal action by the state against the town if we do not comply. Um, the attorney general has already taken legal action against some towns that have refused compliance. Um, so it's in the town's best interest to change our bylaws and meet the state's requirements for compliance.
Are there any other questions? Please, Mark. Mr. Lindblum, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mark. Mark Lindblum, precinct five. Again, Adam, fully understand what you're talking about, fully understand what the selectmen say, fully agree with the others. Uh, regardless of what the MBTA is, I don't think they should have their hands into what the town is. They're already screwing the town over with, again, on other, all the other 40B that they're putting in. I'm against doing anything that's going to allow the MBTA to be able to, again, uh, override what the town residents want. Again, regardless of the funding aspect, which I do get, um, I'm for the towns that have rejected it. Granted, they have to do their legal battles, but I still don't think that the town should just give in to the state's MBTA rules. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, for all your questions. Just to clarify, this act was approved at town meeting a couple of years ago. We are trying to bring our bylaws up to what the act is requiring us to do, which has already been voted. If we don't actually do what we're asking you to do, what Adam is saying is that we might lose grant funding. We might have fees and charges. It is not necessarily going to enhance or give more opportunity to 40B developments because they already, they already curtail the majority of our bylaws. They go by the state rules and regulations. So this has already been voted and approved at town meeting. We're just trying to bring it up to the standard that's required by the state.
Thank you. Mr. Uh, okay, Mr. Marshall. I thought it was Mr. Jones.
Mike Marshall, precinct five. Um, I just want to say two things. The first is this is not from the MBTA. MBTA communities are communities that happen to be near MBTA service and acting like the MBTA is attempting to impose anything on Auburn is completely false and makes absolutely no sense. The second thing is literally the only thing this does is make it slightly easier to build up like multifamily units and apartments, which is what's required in the state in order to continue to be eligible for grant funding. If you don't want the state to give the town money, vote no. If you do want the state to give the town money, vote yes. If you choose to shoot yourself in the foot because you don't want development to happen here, we'll end up with more 40B developments, which some people don't like, some people do. I don't really care how you feel about it, but if you're against 40B, voting against this is only increasing the opportunity for those projects to move forward because it's making it more difficult for developers to build multifamily homes, which are the most likely to, to be affordable and help us with our, our ratio or whatever you want to call it. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Largess?
Danny Largess, precinct four. Um, we're voting on a, we might lose funding, we might lose grants, we might, we might have a tornado tonight. Are we going to vote on it? I mean, this is, it's, it's like the state is strong-arming these towns. And I don't know yay or nay. I mean, this is, it's a tough decision, but we're going on a lot of mites. And I think this, it's hard for all of these people that are sitting here to be voting on might.
I'm going to ask the town manager to respond.
Thank you, um, for the statement. Again, the town voted the MBTA Communities Act a couple of years ago. It's voted, it's approved, it was approved in this forum. We are then obligated to bring back bylaw changes associated with that approval that you voted. So we would hope that the state doesn't fine us and hope that we don't, um, lose grants, but I'm not sure that is the best idea either. So I do understand what you're saying, but we are just trying to, um, bring the vote that was made at this town meeting up to standard. And I have seen several emails from the state to us and to Adam asking us where we are in our bylaw changes. They are on top of it and we need to comply, but obviously it's at the will of the voters.
Mr. Largess?
So, so to my recollection, the first time we voted on this, it was voted down. And then the town manager grabbed somebody out of the audience and had a little sidebar and they made a motion to revisit it. So we had to go back and take another vote, do another presentation and the second time it got voted in by, and I want to say it was like minimum amount, passed by the skin of our teeth. What is this going to do if we vote this in to our original vote two years ago, three years ago that was voted down at the first one?
Who's going to take this one? Dr. Manad?
This, this would not change a previous town meeting's vote. This is, will change the, the bylaw as it currently is written. Um, I just want to add, this is a might-abolusing grant fund. It will prohibit the town from being eligible for quite a few grant programs, including mass work, which is a sizable grant program. So it's not a matter of might lose funds, it's, we will not be eligible for at least half a dozen, if not more, grant programs.
Just got a piece coming down first, then you're next.
I have a question.
Mount to the microphone, please.
Kevin Traynor, precinct five.
Thank you.
I have a question to make this move. Does passing this change the amount of 40B? Does passing this change the amount of 40B structures that are going to go into town?
No, the 40B is a completely different type of program.
Okay.
This does not impact 40B at all.
So this is not going to mean we're opening up the floodgates or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Heseltine from precinct five. I've seen a lot of change in Auburn, you know.
Can you come closer, please, sir?
Seen a lot of change in Auburn over the last, you know, few years with all the developments. I don't know if anybody's seen the apartment buildings they're building up, you know, back over by Walmart. It's huge. And I also wanted to reiterate what Dan Lages said about how it actually got shot down. The first vote actually got shot down, then it got somehow re-brought back up again. So I just think it's a totally bad idea. You know, and like Dan said, you know, he's holding grants over our head, you know? If we don't accept it, I mean, how important, I know grants are important, but I mean, we got enough money in town probably to do what we need to do without selling the whole town out, you know, for apartment buildings and, yeah, so, thank you.
Hi, Will Garabedian, precinct three. Um, I think the vote which we had a couple of years ago, as I recall, there was some clarification when we revoted about exactly what we were going to lose. And that was the reason we voted the way we did. Um, and I also want to say that this town has grown exponentially in the last 50 years. Um, that growth is not going to stop because we decide we're going to limit our writing on zoning. Um, so if anyone thinks that we're going to continue to be just a small town of 15,000 people, that's just pie in the sky hopes. Um, change is here, it's continuing, and that's the way progress happens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Roughly, precinct five. Um, since this has turned into a 40B conversation, one, if I'm correct, uh, we are currently have reached safe harbor, which I believe gives us multiple years of being able to reject 40B. Also, if somebody could address, I also think the select board is currently taking proactive steps to rewrite some or add additional bylaws. So maybe somebody should also address that because the town of Auburn is taking steps to try and prevent 40B, which are not being discussed.
Thank you.
So, to the moderator, the town is in safe harbor, um, for about another year and 10 months, say, if you were to take the numbers. Um, so 40Bs are likely to come forward for at least the short term. So this, again, this bylaw change is not anything to do with 40B. This is simply for allow apartments in certain sections of town. It's not all town, it's in a couple of districts, mainly the core of the town. Like I said, that's for MBTA requirements.
Thank you. Ian Kavanaugh, chair of the select board, will take the board of selectmen question.
I, um, I just want to add. Uh, Ian Kavanaugh, um, select board chair. Um, this, this bylaw has nothing to do with 40B. The issue with 40B is that those developers who want to use that law to build in our town, they would circumvent all of our zoning laws. So it doesn't matter what we put in our zoning laws because 40B means that they just go around those laws and then go to the state, and then they have to come here and just get weavers. So there's no connection with this article with 40B. Um, and I would say too, I don't think the town's in a position to turn down money from the state, whether it be grants, and also it's probably not just grants that might be affected if we don't pass these bylaws. There would be other, uh, other monies involved too. So I just think it would be prudent for us to approve this so that we can continue with that funding. It's not, it's not something just to dismiss. It's significant.
Thank you. Here.
Andrew Toth, precinct three. Can we move to vote?
So the question has been moved. Excuse me. We're going to vote now. Ready? We'll now vote. You don't have to vote to move the question. You're welcome. This is a simple majority vote. Pass it. Sixty-eight, twenty-one, four. The article passes sixty-eight, yes, twenty-one, no, four abstain. Article nine, Mrs. Ethia. This is a two-thirds vote.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to amend the Auburn zoning bylaws, section 3.8 restricted uses and 3.9 accessory uses as printed in the October 28th, 2025 special town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? I see a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote in just a second. Two-thirds? Yeah, they're seeing it's majority. Okay, two-thirds, okay. This is a two-thirds vote. Yeah, sixty-eight, twenty-one, four.
You voted to move the question, you didn't vote to add the question.
No, you don't vote to move the question.
That's what it said. That's what it said up there.
Okay. Go back. Okay, we have to go back to article eight. I didn't see that above they had put that it's moving the question. This is actually the article that we're voting on, article eight. The one that just passed, sixty-eight, twenty-one, four. Has everyone voted who wants to vote? The article passes sixty-four, twenty-four, and one abstention. I'm going to ask Mrs. Ethia to read article nine again, please.
Article nine, I move that the town meeting vote to amend the Auburn zoning bylaws, section 3.8 restricted uses and 3.9 accessory uses as printed in the October 28th, 2025 special town meeting warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a second for Mr. Stensel. Are there any questions? This is a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions on this article? Mr. Stensel.
John Stensel, precinct five. Again, what are we doing and why?
Dr. Manad.
Uh, this, this article is kind of twofold. It's to remove and clean up some data language. Uh, for example, the RF removal, 3.81, that was moved to the general bylaws a few years ago. So this language is duplicating that language. Um, it's also designed to decrease some of the regulatory requirements on businesses and residents. Uh, it will remove the requirement to get a special permit for electric vehicle chargers, as well as remove the requirement for a special permit for farmers markets. So it's trying to reduce some of the regulatory burden.
Are there any other questions?
Roger Armstrong, precinct one. Um, you're talking about electric vehicle charging stations? Were you talking like an individual in my, you know, their home, putting a charging station in their garage or?
Correct, as well as a business installing, say, a couple of charging stations at their business.
You're not referring to somebody doing this for a commercial basis, where?
Correct, it would be an accessory to our commercial business. So if you have a restaurant and they want to have an EV, currently they would need to have a special permit. This would eliminate that extra step.
All right, I missed something here. This, so if I want, if I had a commercial business and I wanted to put 16 charging stations in front of my business, I would not have to go through a process of approval?
You would still need a site plan review for something like that. But the accessory use is, you, so if you have a restaurant, you have a grocery store. Um, currently you would need to get a special permit, the zoning board of appeals to install one or two. Um, it wouldn't be all because they would be making it more of a primary use, accessory use. So it's still just reduce that one extra step that they would need.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson.
Question on 3.8, it says development and floodway. I'm not sure what, if that's a specific area or is a floodway more of a general term for something? I'm not sure what that means. Uh, and maybe the floodway, and what I'm wondering specifically if that's, you know, where the, the drainage tunnel goes under Packerchog Hill and comes out. I don't know if that's what the floodway is that's being referred to here. Um, in 3.941, it's talking about wind machines and turbines. Um, I don't know if that allows other types of wind generation machines as well, other than turbines.
Uh, for your second question, we're just changing, kind of updating the language from wind machine to wind turbines. It's not adding or changing anything else, it's just changing that particular word. Um, and for 3.82, development of floodway, floodway, uh, that's existing. We're not changing that. Uh, FEMA maps, and that's all the floodways, um, and the floodplain. Um, so it's, it's their mapping. So they want to reduce development in the floodplain, but that, that's existing. We're not looking to change that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? One more, Mr. Nistoli.
Dennis Nistoli, precinct one.
Could you just move closer to the microphone, please?
Dennis Nistoli, precinct one. 3.945 and 3.951. Are we taking away all the regulatory oversight by the planning board or zoning board on these issues?
Um, it would depend on the situation. Are you talking about farmers markets?
Christmas trees, uh, 3.945. I mean, I remember a time in '20 used to be littered with Christmas tree stands set up. And they, now there's a regulation to it. I don't, you know, are we taking away all the oversight on that? Because I see everything is crossed out.
So for the, for the Christmas trees, um, the board of selectmen no longer issues open air licenses except for on-town property. So that excerpt is not really applicable anymore. Other parts of town, since you cannot get an open air, open air license. For the farmers markets, you possibly have to go to a site plan with the planning board, depending on the scope of the market. Um, and more than likely you would need some kind of review by DCG and possibly the board of health for food safety.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any, yep, Mr. Lages.
Yes, Danny Lages, precinct four. Uh, 3.947 roof-mounted solar panels. Are we saying they're not going to be allowed or they are going to be allowed?
That section is not being changed or added to. Um, they are currently allowed as an accessory use, um, in any zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on this article? Seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote, we'll now vote. Seventeen, seventy, seven zero? Sixteen? Seventeen? Okay. Article nine passes seventy, seventeen, four. Article 10, Mrs. Ethia, please.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $50,000 from free cash for personnel, expenses, and other related costs associated with the Dr. Robert Goddard's Centennial Celebration Weekend in March 2026.
Chief Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, just want to explain to town meeting a little bit about what's going on with the Goddard Centennial. There is an internal committee and a group of citizens, a Friends of Group, that is helping to raise money for the events of the Goddard Centennial that'll take place, um, the weekend of March 14th and 16th on two different days. What, there's a lot of unknowns in this event. Um, and we discussed this a little bit at the, at the pre-town meeting. Um, about a year ago, we were approached by the Wonder Mission, which is the organization that owns the Dr. Goddard House in Worcester. And they brought to our attention, um, that the centennial was coming up, which we knew. Um, but the piece that we didn't know is sort of the nationwide and potential global attention that this event will get, um, in the world of rocketry and, and space exploration. And what they linked it to, or the example that they gave, was Kitty Hawk in North Carolina. During the Kitty Hawk Centennial, um, they had between 100 and 110,000 people show up in Kitty Hawk. Now, I hope to God that we do not have 100,000 people standing on Packerchog Golf Course. But, but even if we were to get a quarter of that or, or something closely related to 15 to 20%, we could potentially be looking at somewhere between 15 to 25,000 people. And that's not a small feat, um, when it comes to planning these types of events. So this $50,000 that's being asked to allocate, this is, um, this is not for the planning of the centennial in terms of like the, the party or any of those events. The Friends of Group is, is raising money for the festivities of that. Um, this is for, uh, public safety planning between police, fire, DPW, where we're working this very similar to the Fourth of July celebration at the Pappas Complex. Um, that event draws anywhere from 10 to 12,000 people annually. So we'll need to, at a minimum for planning of this, uh, you know, be able to ramp that up kind of double. Um, and the fact that it's over two days, this is to cover the salaries for police, fire, DPW, health, all of the various departments that will need to be in the planning process, um, to, to pull off an event like this. This is a difficult event in respects that we've never done it before. And we don't know who's going to come, we don't know how many. Um, but we do need to be prepared, you know, in, in some way, shape, or form. Um, so that, that is what this article is asking to do, um, is just to sort of, uh, do the pre-planning and the incident planning for that event. Happy to take any questions if anybody has them.
Are there any questions on article 10? Yes. Can we confirm a second on this motion, please? We have a second. Are there any questions on this article? Mr. Talisman.
Russell Talisman, Precinct Four. The only question I, I really have is, like you were saying, chief, it's, there's so many unknowns and you're saying we could get hit with 100,000 people, 50,000 people. And there are a lot of rocket freaks. So what happens if we do get hammered with a lot of people and Auburn doesn't have the staff and the personnel to offer adequate policing and everything to this event? And we got to call out for like mutual aid and everything? What becomes of that 50,000 if we got to? So, yeah, just, like you said, this could get out of hand.
That's a good question, thank you. Like any event, even the Fourth of July fireworks, we utilize resources that are outside of the town of Auburn. We utilize the Worcester County Sheriff's Office, the Department of Fire Services. We've had assistance on occasion from the state police, Mass District Seven in terms of ambulance task forces, you know, to have kind of like pre-arranged things. And this happens in other communities when they have their large events. We're all sort of put on notice and standby and we're asked to sort of, you know, not necessarily commit resource to send them there, but we know within the district, both on the police and fireside, what's going on in the neighboring communities and we know what potential strike teams or task forces may be activated as part of, of an event. So the police chief and I, we, we envision on something like this and we're going to, we're going to plan for 30,000. That's, that's what we're planning for. Once, you know, when you go from 30 to 50, right, where it gets a little, you know, confusing or where it gets problematic is in the transportation because we may not have enough buses to be able to transport people from either Holy Cross or the mall. So that will get slowed down. But from a, from a public safety perspective, you know, once you kind of get to that 30,000 mark, other logistical things and sort of how people are moving around is one thing, but whether there's 30,000 or 50,000, we're going to have our resources adjusted from mutual aid and all of those things, you know, in that, in that range. 100,000, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother animal. I think as we get closer, I'm hoping that some of these different rocket organizations across the country, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to pull some information from them and we'll, we'll see what kind of traction this is getting. And I think that after the first of the year, I think we're going to, as this thing goes a little more national in terms of publication, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to kind of get a better sense of what we're facing here. But from the jump, we are, we are planning and we are going to staff an event for 30,000 people. That's going to be our sort of starting point.
Thank you, chief. Are there any other questions? Right here. No, I saw you kind of move it.
Amy Margaret Castellano, Precinct One. Chief, what is the personnel expense and cost that we associate with July 4th celebration? If you have that number.
Yeah, so that number is somewhere around 20,000, 20 to, it's about 20,000. So this is based on a two day event for longer days. So this is based on two eight hour days for all town employees that would be involved. The Fourth of July is usually, it's based on one day for six hours and those expenses, I think townwide maybe pushed close to $20,000.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Nelson.
I just want to say it's great that the police and fire have the foresight to plan this ahead of time. I did a project on Goddard back in college and it's a really amazing thing. So he's quite the guy. This is really good for Auburn and, you know, I wish you guys the best. I just want to point out the, I wish maybe we could add some programming in the schools as well towards this. I just want to point out the irony though, that Goddard probably with, with the regulations in place today, probably couldn't launch that rocket now. So, you know, you really, we really need to be aware of all these regulations we keep putting in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on Article 10? Seeing none, we'll now vote. This is a simple majority. Is there anyone else who wishes to vote? Eighty-eight yes and two no, the article passes. Article 11, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $250,000 from free cash to the town OPEB, other post, employment benefits, trust, or act on anything relative thereto.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions on this standard article? Seeing none, we'll now vote. The motion passes eighty-three to four with abstentions. Article 12, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash to the town stabilization fund.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions on this standard article? Seeing none, we'll now vote. Yes. Done. The article passes eighty-nine to two. Article number 13, please, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, 22G, which reads as follows. In any city or town that accepts this clause, real estate that is in the domicile of a person but is owned by a trustee, conservator, or other fiduciary for the person's benefits, if the real estate would be eligible for exemption under Clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, or 22F, if the person were the owner of the real estate.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions on this article? Does anyone need an explanation as what, to what it is? Okay. Vice Chair Corrine.
Sorry, I'm going to stand because these seats are killing my legs. So essentially, Warren Articles 13, 14, and 15 are a redo of Article 32 from the Maytown Meeting. The Heroes Act, which was passed in August of 2024, provided certain benefits for small businesses as well as municipalities to offer certain benefits to our veterans to allow them to stay, you know, for the municipality side, to allow them to stay in their houses for longer. Veterans receive a local tax abatement similar to seniors and others. However, one of the, this clause in particular will provide that tax benefit to properties that are held in a trust for the specific benefit of a veteran. They currently do not, they're not eligible for the veteran's benefit. So we are accepting this language. You already approved this back in May of 2025, this most recent May. The state, however, because there's three separate clauses that we had bundled into one article, they asked that we break it out into three separate votes for clarity purposes.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Article 13? Seeing none, we'll now vote. This is a simple majority. The article passes ninety, yes, one no. Article 14, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22A, which reads as follows. In a city or town that accepts this clause and is certified by the Commissioner of Revenue to be assessing all property at full and fair cash value, an abatement granted pursuant clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22E, 22F shall be increased annually and by an amount equal to the increase in the cost of living as determined by the Consumer Price Index. For such year, the Department of Revenue shall annually inform each city or town that accepts this clause of the amount of this such increase.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a second. Are there questions on this article? Seeing none, we'll now vote. This is also a simple majority. The article passes ninety-two to one. Article 15, Vice Chair. I'm sorry, is it the chairman who's doing it? Article 15.
Yeah, at this moment, the select board withdraws Article 15. It appears that this article is redundant. It appears the article is redundant, so we need to investigate that. So at this point, Article 15 is withdrawn by the select board.
Thank you. Article 16, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to approve a new traffic study bylaw as printed in the October 28th, 2025 special town meeting warrant.
This is a two thirds vote. Is there a second on this? I see a second. Do we have questions? Do we want an explanation? Yes. Mr. Talisman.
Yeah, in this traffic study, my name is Russell Talisman, Precinct Four. What's the fees going to be associated with this traffic study? Because I know every study comes with, with a price and what is the benefit?
Madam Moderator, the developer of the proposed project would pay any period of your fees, so the fee, there will be no fees to the town. Costs to the town.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, this is a two thirds vote, we'll now vote. The article passes eighty-three, yes, eight, no. Article 17, Mrs. Ethia.
Madam Moderator, I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Is there a second? Do we have to vote on this? We don't have to vote on a postpone indefinitely? Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely. Are there any questions before we vote? Okay, we'll, we'll now vote. No, no, no. This is a, a motion to postpone indefinitely. So we're going to ask him to, they need a minute to adjust the article. I heard something. Oh, I didn't see you up there, Ms. LeBonte. So on this vote, Miss, um... He wants to do a hand vote, yeah. So we have to vote on the hand vote? Although, is there, is there? Well, that sounded horrible. Is there a second? All those in favor of voting on this article by hand, please signify by raising your hand. Are there any opposed? The motion carries. We're now voting to postpone the article indefinitely by a hand vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? We have one opposed. Thank you. The, the article is postponed indefinitely. Thank you, Ms. LeBonte. Article 18. Mrs. Ethia.
Article 18, I move that the town meeting vote to grant to National Grid temporary and or permanent easements across, over, and under town property on Auburn Street for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, repairing, maintaining, operating, and patrolling a transmission line of high and low voltage consisting of at least three poles with associated wires and cables and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager to execute any and all documents necessary for the conveyance of such easements to National Grid in accordance with law.
Is there a second? We have a second. DPW Director Paquin is here if there are any questions. Are there any questions? Mr. Nelson.
I was just going to shout it out. What is the exact location of this? Is, is this down by Central Square somewhere or?
Can, can you take that? The DPW Director will take this.
Thank you. The location of the utility pole is right next to the entrance to the current fire station headquarters.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll now vote. Thank you. The article passes 90, yes, 3, no, 1 abstention. Article 19, Mrs. Athia, please.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to approve a 3,500-foot sewer rehabilitation project along Garter Drive, beginning at Garter Drive and extending through a cross-country easement towards South Old Road, and a Sword Street Forest Main Rehabilitation Project with project limits starting at the Sword Street Pump Station extending to the intersection of Jerome Ave and Hillside Streets totaling $4,700,000, and to raise said funds by borrowing, payable in not more than the term provided by law, and premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by the vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of insurance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by the vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount with authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions on this article? Seeing none, we'll now vote. This is a two-thirds vote. Article 20, Mrs. Athia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to approve drainage and irrigation improvements totaling $2,500,000, $500,000 of which to be funded through the Paketar Golf Course retained earnings, and the remaining of the $2 million to be raised by borrowing, payable in not more than the term provided by law, and by premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by the vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Is there a second? I see a second. Are there any questions on this? This is a two-thirds vote. Do we have a question? Mr. Nelson.
This $2,500,000, this is for improvements for the golf course? Is that correct? Or, I'm assuming this is all internal to that one project? I don't know.
The DPW Director will take this question. If you can just speak close to the microphone, people are having a hard time hearing.
So this is a two-part project. One project would be irrigation, one project would address drainage at the golf course.
Thank you. Is there a time that, is this going against the tax levy? Or is, I'm not sure how this question is worded. It's showing $500,000 is coming through retained earnings from the golf course. Will that be then paid back through additional retained earnings in future years as well? You know, is it going to be 500 per year going forward, or is that a different method of payment?
Thank you for the question. I can ask the DPW Director to respond.
So the payments for the borrowing will be made through the golf course funds, and I have worked with Ms. Harneis on the schedule for the borrowing.
So the retained earnings from the golf course. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, this is a two-third, oh, I'm sorry, did you have one? Okay. We'll now vote. The article passes 81, yes, 9, no, and 3 abstentions. Article 21, Mrs. Athia.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to repurpose the following unexpended CIP funds as follows. 302009 Auburn Street Design, $25,620. 302017 Police Station Roof, $19,700. 303001 Auburn Middle School Feasibility Study, $17,170.64. 303045 High School Land Acquisition, $8,287.40. 303050 High School Construction, $20,645.82. 303060 High School Land Acquisition, $25,068.38. 3012919 LED Street Lights, $33,507.76, for a total of $150,000, and to appropriate said unexpended funds to procure engineering services for the design of the Water Street culvert replacement.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions on this article? Mr. Talisman.
Yeah, Russell Talisman, Precinct 4. I'm just very confused, there's a lot of the language, like, the Auburn Street design, what are they going to design? Then there's two land acquisitions for the high school, and high school construction, what does this all mean?
The, I'll let the town manager. I'm sorry, CFO.
Um, thank you. These funding sources are previously borrowed funds, and these projects have been completed. And we did some work with the, well, I put together a schedule for the select board to review on completed projects, so we want to clean up these and get them off of the books. So this is a way of transferring them from one place to the other, but this is totally completed projects.
I'm sorry, did you want to comment at the mic? Because no one can hear you if you're not at the microphone.
No, I get confused just reading it. I didn't realize that this was an ongoing project. You know, the way it was written, it looked like there'd be a lot of, this was something that was going to happen. I didn't quite understand what this was.
These were projects that the funds weren't used once completed, so unexpended. Are there any other questions?
So, reading this, it looks like this is for design of the replacement for the culvert, $150,000. When I saw that detour go up, I thought this would have been fixed by now. There's basically two metal pipes going under the road. The DPW should, I would think, be able to just do a straight replacement of that as is. It's a very simple design there. This is, you know, just for the design, it's 150. That doesn't even include the construction costs. You know, what are we getting here? It just seems exorbitant. Thank you.
Mrs. Paquin, I'll have you address that. It's not a, it's not a simple design. It's become quite the project.
So this is not a simple design. We would be looking at the replacement of the culverts. So there is environmental permitting that's going along with it, as well as, we understand that the culverts are currently underdesigned, so we would need to replace and increase capacity, which would include the construction of a box culvert. So there would be other constraints that we would need to address.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes, actually, I was going to mention that there's something called the Culvert Replacement Municipal Assistant Grants, and I don't know if that's what we're taking part in here. I'm surprised the MBTA hasn't gotten their clause into this as well.
So, a couple things. This is a two-thirds vote, but I'd like a motion to just amend one word at the end of the sentence, the "design of the Water Street Culvert Replacement" to "the design of the Water Street Culvert Remediation." Is there someone willing to make that motion? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there a second? We have a second. So we've just voted to amend one word in Article 21, "replacement to remediation." So I'm going to do this by a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. All those opposed? It is unanimous. So now, the vote on the amended motion, Article 21, this is a two-thirds vote, please vote Is there anyone else who wishes to vote? The article passes 81, yes, 10, no. Article 23, Mrs. Athia.
Article 22.
I'm sorry, 22.
Madam Moderator, I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The article is postponed indefinitely. Article 23.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $40,000 from free cash towards the replacement of a groundwater monitoring well, environmental testing, and solid waste advisory services at the former landfill.
Is there a second? I see a second. Are there any questions on this article? The article passes 86, yes, 5, no. Article 23, Mrs. Athia.
Article 20.
I'm sorry, 24.
Article 24. I move that the town meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article 4 of the May 6, 2025 Annual Town Meeting, Catch Basin Truck, account number 024222-582559, as follows. Authorize $65,000 to be used for the repair of the 2014 International 7,000 six-wheel dump slash sand plow, number 45.
Is there a second? I see a second. Are there any questions on this article?
How old is this vehicle? Can this vehicle be stripped and go with a cabin chassis like the fire department did with the F-450 ambulance? We're talking about taking the dump body off, taking the sander off, taking the plow off, and putting it on a new vehicle. It's kind of a lot of money to spend on a vehicle when a new cabin chassis would run right around $130,000, and it'll be a new vehicle.
So, we are looking to repair the 2014 dump truck that we need for the upcoming snow and ice season. We are re-appropriating the funds that we were going to use, the CIP funds that were appropriated for the purchase of a Catch Basin truck. We are able to fix the Catch Basin truck that we currently have, so we are just re-appropriating that money towards the repair of the dump truck that we need.
Mr. Largess.
So, this vehicle's already over 10 years old, 2014, and it's going to cost $65,000 when a new cabin chassis, again, like, I'm sure the fire chief will tell us, say that they took the box off of a F-450 ambulance and put it on a new chassis for pennies and saved the town a ton of money. Why can't we do that with this truck? Why can't we take the dump body off, the sander off, and the plow off, and put it on a new cab and chassis?
The town manager's just going to respond to this one.
Thank you. Very good questions, and I spoke in depth with the DPW Director about this. Back in 2000, the beginning of this year, we were going to purchase, we were going to purchase a Catch Basin truck, we were going to do some work there. We're re-appropriating that money because we have two new employees at the DPW that have found a way to fix that vehicle for much less money. So we're used, so we've done what you're basically suggesting, is look in to see how to save money, what's more effective, and what's more cost advantageous. So we have done that, and now we're able to look at the money here that we had set aside for that and use it for the purpose of repairing a dump truck, which is the sand and plow that we need for our snow season. So what you've asked and what you're saying is what we've already done, it's just not detailed out here.
Go to the microphone if you have a question or comment, please.
I'm kind of confused. How is it already done if we're going to spend $65,000 just to replace, I mean, to repair a 10-year-old, actually a 12-year-old truck, right? 11-year-old truck? We're going in 2026, the truck's a 2014. If you have a vehicle that's going to cost you over half, I mean, common sense would tell me, if I had a $20,000 vehicle and it was going to cost me $15,000 to fix it, I'd junk it. So why can't we strip the truck, and I know the police department's done it with cruises and utilized parts of the cruises, to new cruises? Cabin chassis, $130,000, we got a brand-new truck, brand, all you're doing is swapping the bed. Cabin chassis, $130,000, we got a brand-new truck, all you're doing is swapping the bed.
Go ahead, Ms.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mrs. Lajus. Are you finished? Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Fairbanks.
Kenny Fairbanks, Precinct 2. The dump truck is a great dump truck. We need it for plowing. If you order a new truck, it's two-year wait. I know Dan thinks you can just pick a truck out of a lot and put the bed on it and call it a day, but we're waiting for trucks for two years out, and this truck is needed for this winter, the plowing's hand, and the motor just went and replacing it, so. Brand-new trucks, Dan, are $300,000, two-year waiting list.
Please don't yell out like that.
So I beg you to pass this so we can use it for plowing for the season. It's really not a lot of money to have a big dump truck on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Talisman.
So he just, he just said that the motor's gone, so it's 65 grand to replace the motor. I'm really not sure what's wrong with the truck, but again, so we're gonna put 65 grand into it, and then come next year, we're gonna be saying, okay, now we need another couple hundred grand for a new truck. So this 65 grand is just to get us through the winter?
Mr. Fairbanks.
With this motor, this truck's gonna be brand-new. Brand-new motor. Everything else, it's beautiful, great shape. So either you wanna sideline the truck, it's in great shape, and the motor just got tired, but we're gonna use it this winter, and if we don't get it fixed, we gotta hire private contractors to come in with a big truck, and it's gonna cost a lot of money. So I really think we should fix the truck.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this article? Mr. Marshall.
Mike Marshall, Precinct 5. Will the repairs extend the useful life of this vehicle so that we can also push back a capital purchase that we would eventually have to make anyway?
Mr. Fairbanks, who is the town meeting member who's also the superintendent of the DPW service?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we're gonna get many more years out of this truck, and yes, it's gonna buy us a lot of time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this article? This is a two-thirds vote, we'll now vote. The article passes 86 yes, 4 no, and 3 abstentions. Article number 25.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the establishment of a new private cemetery to be located at Zero Cemetery Road as printed in the October 28, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant.
This is by, is there a second? I see a second. This is by citizen's petition. Are there any questions on this article? I'll bring the petitioner down. Mr. Nelson.
Where in town is Cemetery Road? I'm guessing, is that at Hillside or elsewhere?
Could one person who's speaking to this please come down to the microphone? Please speak into the microphone and give your name. Thank you.
I'm Sayyed Tahir, one of the co-petitioners of this petition. It's actually off of Stafford, where there's Lester, Auburn, and Worcester, three townlines meet. And there's a Hebrew cemetery right across it.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, this is a simple majority. Can we now vote, please? The article passes 77 yes, 11 no, 2 abstention. Before I move on to Article 26, I want to thank everyone for your thoughtful questions during my first town meeting, your patience. I hope you like the new setup. I feel it was more interactive with the town meeting members so we can respond to your questions better. So, I didn't ask for that. I just wanted to thank you for your understanding. Article 26.
Madam Moderator, I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Is there a second? By a raise of hands, all those in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Is there a motion? Oh, excuse me, hold on, hold on. We have a question before the motion came.
Joe Fresco, Precinct 2. Articles 13, 14, and 15 were supposed to be a break, a part of an article we voted on earlier this year. Are we at risk by not voting on 15 since we're pulling it back where 13 and 14 were approved?
You're correct. Article 13, 14, and 15 was in the annual town meeting and was approved. We brought it to this town meeting after further research. Article 15 is redundant to what we already have. We don't need it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor? Thank you. We are dissolved until May unless there's another meeting needed.